We'll go ahead and reconvene from closed session. Staff, do we have a report from closed session?
Thank you, Chair. There was discussion on the item that's on the agenda, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for our invocation. Is Reverend Michael Cook here? Then I would ask that we all bow our heads in a moment of silence in memory of those that we lost in the mudslides last week in Santa Barbara. Thank you for that. Are any of our Boy Scouts still with us? Okay. We had a Boy Scouts do a tour earlier, and I was going to invite them up to lead us in the pledge, but they have already departed for the evening, so if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gallivan, do we have a city manager report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, just wanted to share with you that the clock in Old Town on South H that was gifted to the city by the Rotary has been repaired. And I'll also refer to our city attorney for an update.
Thank you. The reason I wanted to bring this up tonight is because of something that's on the agenda, the cannabis ordinance. As you know, there was a restaurant ordinance filed, and we've all been waiting for the county to count the signatures, validate or invalidate signatures. We thought it was going to take until the 23rd, well, actually, we found out today. As you may recall, there was about 1,620 or so signatures that were needed. 2,022 were submitted. Only 1,400 were verified, so 622 were not verified. So that means that ordinance 164017 is actually now effective.
I'm sorry. I know you appreciate this, but please be respectful and no applauding. Thank you.
And so what that means, and your fortuitous interim city manager had already scheduled a meeting today for staff to begin to think about what was, what it was going to take to get the process moving, not anticipating this was going to happen today. And so we have begun the process of figuring out how to process the applications, what information we may need, what additional information we want to get. And so that was done today. But I want the public to understand, we're not ready to hit the floor running yet. And hopefully, it will be not too long, but it's going to take as long as it takes, and we're going to do it as fast as we can. Fortunately, we have all the forms and resolutions already done, so at least we're ahead of the game. So now what we're doing is making sure that we assist the public by having a process that's going to make sense and be efficient before we say, let's accept the first application. So please, the public, I know it's important, but please don't burden the city clerk or people saying, so can I file my application? Can I file my application? Not yet. You will know because an announcement will be made, and it'll be on the website when that can start.
Councilmember Mosby.
I know it's tough to answer, but approximate one to two weeks, you think? Or three weeks?
I would say at least a month.
A month, okay.
I'm not saying it's going to be a month. I'm saying at least a month.
I just wanted, because some people anticipating 24 hours or 48 hours, so somewhere it's going to be eight weeks.
It's definitely not 24 hours or 48 hours.
Gotcha. So weeks, just let the people know.
Okay. Oh, and because of that, I would suggest that you not take the action item, which is the last thing on your agenda.
That was going to be my follow-up question, is should we pull item nine from the agenda as a result of not needing it?
Yes.
Do I have support in pulling item nine from the agenda? Needs to be a majority.
Yes, I mean...
Yes.
Thank you. So item nine is being pulled from the agenda. If you were here for that, it is no longer going to be on our agenda, so. Presentations presented elsewhere? Oh, sorry. Yes, councilmember.
I could ask...
Sure.
Mr. Panoni, if you could explain in a little bit more depth here on the referendum, okay? It did not move forward because we didn't qualify the minimum required signatures. Now, there's no after effects to this that's going to come back on us. In other words, there's no second chance on this one for these people that have tried to move forward with this referendum. Is that correct? I mean, we can move forward with full force to implement whatever we end up as a group deciding is the correct path?
Yes. I guess technically, a year from now, someone could process an initiative, try to get an initiative to repeal the ordinance that's now effective, but that's a totally different process. So in terms of a referendum and this ordinance, there's nothing left that can be done to not have this ordinance become effective. Well, I suppose someone could go to court and try to sue, but I don't see any grounds for that.
So this, these groups that are going to invest in Long Polk or potentially will invest in Long Polk, there's no security item for them, so to speak, in case in one year from now someone comes up with a referendum again. There's nothing that actually solidifies their investment in Long Polk if somebody comes up with this again and then it gets taken to a vote, if this group decides to do something in a year again.
No more or less than any other land use decision that the council makes.
Okay. I got you. Thank you so much.
Any more questions for staff? Okay. There were two presentations done elsewhere. One was on January 11th, 2018. Councilmember Starbuck presented a proclamation in honor of Sunset Auto's 35th anniversary. And on January 15th, 2018, Mayor Lingle presented a proclamation honoring January 15th, 2018, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, 2018. We have no presentations to make here. And just for those of you that I see as late arrivals, item nine has been pulled from the agenda. There is no need to address it, just in case you were wondering. Presentations. The City of Long Polk's Economic Development Committee will give a brief presentation on its recent activities and accomplishments, as well as in upcoming meetings and events.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maria Hall. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Committee. We are going to have slides. Okay, this is our economic development periodic report, so it's covering the period of July 2017 through December 2017, so the second half of 2017. All righty. So our, it says 2017 vision statement, but it's still in effect, is to develop a strong positive image which attracts and retains business and residents and visitors that achieves economic vitality in the Long Polk Valley. So here's our current committee. We have our members, and of those, we also have an executive committee comprised of members from the committee, and then we also have associate members. So we have five open positions, and tonight, the council will be appointing, I believe, all of the positions, hopefully. So, and then also our officers, which is myself and Jeremy Ball. Our next meeting in February, I'll be transitioning off, and then we'll pick a new chair and vice chair. Okay, so our membership is comprised of 22 total members, so 10 are the regular at-large positions. Five of the positions have membership tied directly to council members' terms, and then seven associates, which includes representatives from the Chamber of Commerce and also one from Explore Long Polk. So we have five open positions, one is at-large, and four are associates. So we also, amongst our councils, strive for ethnic and industry diversity. So we had several areas that we focus our recruitment, Long Polk Unified School District. We have filled that position this end of the year. That was Kathy Froming. And then we're also still encouraging applicants from the Schumash and/or the FCC. Okay, so our volunteer hours, we have approximately 208 hours. That was outside of EDC meetings, so it's spent on EDC stuff above and beyond regular executive, regular and executive meetings. So hours in subcommittee work, outside meetings, research, emails, phone calls. So some additional meetings outside of our meetings that were held was the education summit meetings with Allen Hancock College, so it's planning the Pathways to Preparedness, and also the Economic Vitality Forum Subcommittee. So there's various events that we attend around town, chamber events, city council, we present EVA awards. You can kind of read those for yourself. And different topics that we support broadband, and we'll go into more detail of those in a sec. Okay, so every two years, in the even-numbered years, we have strategic planning session where we come up with our goals for the following, the coming two years. So we'll be having one later this year, but going back to the one we had in 2016, we identified five priorities, and so I will quickly go through those. So one of them is broadband, so support broadband connectivity. And our progress is we have several committee members that participate in the Tri-County Broadband Initiative and the activities that they do in that group. Okay, so funding was one that we identified and we worked on for the first year, and then we decided recently to shelf this initiative to focus our efforts on other priorities and goals. So marketing, this is a big one. To market economic development, support and expand events, and expand economic development capacity. So you can read some of the things we do there. Every month, we present the Economic Vitality Award, or EVA Award, to a local business, and we publicize that in our Long Polk Record column, and that runs the first and third Sundays of the month in the Long Polk Record. And sometimes we summarize the award that we gave, or we'll have another topic related to economic development. And then one of the big things that we did was he held the Second Economic Vitality Forum, which was just earlier this month, and we had about, I think, 60 people in attendance. So that was a good success for us. And also with marketing, we had the EVAs that we gave out are listed there. And then also, our annual overall EVA was presented to the Solvang Brewing Company. And so we held the Second Economic Vitality Forum, which I talked about, and we also regularly update our social media and website pages, so we keep our Facebook going and our website, which is off of the city's website. Workforce is another one of our priorities, improve the business environment and workforce. So a huge event that we held for that was called the Pathways to Preparedness Summit. And it was, we collaborated with Allen Hancock, Long Polk Unified School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and the County of Santa Barbara, and that was September 13th. So that was a big success. Then also, we have other things planned, continuing the business visitation program, and other things that you can read there. Aesthetics is improve physical and perceived image of Long Polk. So we continue promoting different events, and we also promoted the commercial facade rebate and loan program that the city's offering. And then we're also promoting the community cleanup workshop, which is coming on January 25th. All right, and thank you very much. I will turn the mic over to Teresa Gallivan from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. This part of our update includes economic indicators, and in addition to sales tax revenue generated, TOT, council has also asked that we include an update on the types of tournaments and swimming events that we're having because of improvements we've made to our facilities or our parks. So this slide is, continues to show you that information. This is particularly on the Aquatic Center, and you can see since we installed the timers in 2012, which is, you know, over on the left side of this bar graph, that we did see an increase in the number of swim meets and water polo tournaments. However, in this last year, we did close for four months due to the replastering of all the pools, and that did have an impact, and we did see that, we saw a decrease in the number of swim meets that we had in this past fiscal year due to that. The swim meets do take place during that spring season. We did discuss, before we had our closure and when we decided to do all the renovations, we did discuss that that still would be the best time because we would be impacting customers that come in on a regular basis, more highly if we had done it in the summer or something like that. So it really still, although it did have an impact on swim meets, it was an overall more optimal time. So we'll see that pick up again in the year ahead. And then water polo, we saw a decrease in that because they did not, Long Polk High School did not have a boys' water polo team this past fall season. So we're working on seeing those numbers come back up, but that's why you see that dip there, and we are documenting that. Also, I understand that the transfer that we've done to active in our recreation and parks as a way to, is going to be a more efficient way for us also to track the number of people using our facilities. So I think that's going to help with our data collection here as well, more effectively. This next slide goes into JM Park. We did improvements at JM Park back in 2013, and since then, you saw a number of increases in our tournaments and total tournament days, which also translates into people spending time in Long Polk, staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, buying gas at our gas stations. Last year, the Little League does work on a bid basis, and they do try and move their tournaments around, so we did not have them here last year. However, we are hoping that they will be back again, and we are also working on a new tournament that we're trying to attract, and that is travel ball tournaments in order to see increased usage of our fields due to the improvements we've made. Here's where we get to the more typical data that...
Ms. Gallivan, can I interject here real quick?
Certainly.
For our future updates on this, could we include Thompson Park now also?
Yes.
Since that renovation has been done?
Good idea.
Again, with the softball aspect included with the Little League?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you. Okay, this is our employment data, and unemployment is now, this was as of October 2017, at 5%. I think it's really valuable to see it in the overall trend, and you can see back in 2010, we are at greater than 12%. And like everybody else, we've seen that trend go down over the years into now about 5%. Sales tax activity, we continue to see that improving, and we anticipate a, for 1718 fiscal year, an increase to 4.6 million, 4.68 million, a modest increase over the past year of 4.62. Transient occupancy tax, we're also estimating for 1718, 2.2 million, whereas last year we were at 1.8. So that, that is going well. Explore Long Polk is doing a great job, and now that we have the Hilton Garden Inn opened with more rooms, that's also very positive for our community. Property tax, we also estimate an increase to 4.4 million over 4.1, so trending in a positive direction. New business license activity, estimating that we would end the fiscal year with approximately 372, so pretty much on par for where we've been last year, 356, and before that, 311. So some increases there, and those are new business licenses. Capital development activity, this is the amount of our building permits based on valuation, and we estimate that we'll end the year with 22.3 million. Last year, we had quite a dip. We didn't necessarily have such a big dip in the number of building permits. Last year, it was 588, the year before, 646. But last year, it was because those projects and permits reflected renovations and not new construction. While we had a lot of construction that was completed in the past fiscal year, probably the time that they pulled those permits was in previous fiscal years. So we estimate that this will be back up to where it was. You know, we have 335 permits issued to date, and I think that was about two weeks ago, approximately. So we should be ending the year with probably more building permits than we did than in 1516. This is the, really a new, a very important emphasis from council. We hear loud and clear that housing is really important to our community, and an update, we're starting to include this on a regular basis in your updates. And since we last provided this update, I'll share with you some of the new information we have. In the second section, under Summit View Homes, that is under new ownership, and the new owners are very eager to develop. So that is good news for our community, and we know that they are going to, if it wasn't for the mudslides last week, we would have had a meeting with them last week to continue to move this forward, but I know we are going, not last week, but if they couldn't, they couldn't get through, I should say. And we're going to be meeting with them again shortly. They're very eager to get moving. And then Burton Ranch Development, it was two council meetings ago that you all approved the policies necessary to start the community facility district formation. So that was another big benchmark that we've hit since we last talked to you. And then today, it was brought up during, in our joint meeting with the Economic Development Committee by Councilmember Mosby. Today, we met with the county to have some discussions about the Bailey Avenue corridor application process going to Lafco for annexation. So that was another big step in that development process. We continue to work with retail strategies on retail recruitment, also very important to our community, filling vacancies in the commercial corridors. This is a list of businesses opened and closed, and we do, you know, we do ask for help in tracking all of this. We try to keep an eye on what's going on in the community. It came up in our joint workshop, the question about Apex. And to answer your question, Councilmember Starbuck, we had, we did reach out to them months ago, knowing that at some point, they were going to need to move, since we have the facility, the fleet facility that's going to be built in that location. So Ms. McGinty and I did meet with them, and we have been in touch with them all along about different options and shared options with them that might be available for them in our community. We certainly don't want to see them go somewhere else, and would love to retain them in our community if that, if we could find a fit for them. So we have been working with them. So here you see a number of different openings and closings, and some that are still planned and in the pipeline. The really, I think, big one here that has the largest impact on jobs, obviously, go through, and you're familiar with Hilton Garden Inn, we've talked about that a lot, and really excited to see that open in this, in this timeframe, 70 jobs, continue to go down Chop House, a new restaurant, the Starbucks, you can see that's just about done here, and coming down here to things that are planned and getting ready to open, the Community Health Center on West Ocean. That has the potential for 85 new jobs and about 500 construction jobs. So there are projects in the pipeline. Any questions? Members of the Economic Development Committee are here as well.
Councilmember Vega.
Teresa, I was wondering if there's any resource that allows us to be a little bit more transparent with some of this great information, you know, as far as economic development. We have a PIO person here, and we have a website here, and some of this stuff, the information that we get sometimes is being withheld to a certain point in the month. But, you know, to promote Long Polk as part of our, showing this business-friendly side of our, that we all want to be, some of this information that, once it's approved or whatever, is it possible to put this up on a website where we can actually sell Long Polk to someone that's actually looking to promote and develop here and possibly invest? I mean, we're not asking for things that aren't approved or a secret, but I'm thinking it would probably help all of us connectivity after having all these discussions here with the Economic Development Committee. You know, they'd love to be able to take credit for helping actually see something move forward in a way, not just be the think tank and be the pep, the pep rally type thing. You know, they deserve the credit whenever something does happen, and then with all of us putting in our ideas and developing a new process for economic development as far as their structure, we could all, it's not the time for council requests, I'm sure. I'm not sure if I can even put something in there like that. Is it possible to even request something without waiting till the end of the meeting?
I would say it was make a recommendation, and then we could...
Okay.
...bring it back as a discussion.
I'd like to recommend that possibly we take a look at getting together with the Economic Development Committee. We have new people coming in here, and talk about a restructure of that committee so that we can move forward. There was mention made about an ad hoc committee. I think it's a brand-new year, so maybe we can put something in with a little, with some teeth in it here, from which it'll make them feel better, we can get something out of it, the business community can actually, instead of just talking about it. We sit here, this is our town. We need to make something happen. I think this is a brand-new year. I've come in here, and you know, we're going to take the gloves off, we're going to come over here and say, hey, what do we need? We need housing, we need entertainment, we need recreation. What would fill up our hotels? What would, what would help bring people here and actually leave with a good impression here? I think that probably what would happen if we, if we brought our sports fields up, it would help the families, okay? So if we pick one and we focus on that, whether we use volunteerism or whatever, these people would come in and we make them, one at a time, tournament quality helps fill the hotels. These families, from what I understand, it may be a little different twist, you know, it's not, but it's looking at the family aspect of it, which will actually bring more people here to spend money. They'll actually go to the grocery stores, they'll actually go to the retail stores, they'll actually stay at a hotel. They're not going to come here and leave the same day if it's promoted, you know, for a two- or three-day tournament, if we put ourselves on there. So I'd like to see if we can possibly, as a recommendation, say, let's put our heads together. We don't need to delete or remove anybody from economic, how do we restructure? Okay, we already have an executive committee, we already have an at-large, we always, we already have associates. But if there is a structure of putting an ad hoc committee to make something happen now, not next year, so that we just use statistics, that would be just a recommendation that maybe we could think about, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or recommendations for the committee or staff? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you all for your volunteer and work that you do on this very difficult topic. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. We'll open up public comment on consent calendar. It's maximum of three minutes, and regarding the items on consent calendar.
Good evening, city council. On consent item number three, oh, I am Chuck Mattson, Director of Programming for Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Centers. I am proud to... I am proud to inform Lompoc City Council of our intent to submit application for the upcoming California Violence Intervention and Prevention CalVIP grant for grant period May first, two thousand and eighteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. We are looking forward to this opportunity, which provides at-risk youth in the community or on probation with case management, internships, life skills counseling, substance abuse treatment, education, and job skills, with the goal of seeing a decrease in chronic and serious young offenders in Lompoc. The Lompoc CalVIP program will help the selected youth in the city of Lompoc to develop the skills necessary to meet both their educational and job-related goals, so that by meeting these goals, they will be able to disassociate themselves from criminal violence, gangs, substance abuse, and negative behavior to become positive and successful members of our community. Through collaboration and coordination with the Lompoc Police Department, Lompoc Unified School District, Lompoc Probation Department, Department of Behavioral Wellness, and Allen-Hancock College, our goal is to continually motivate it to address substance abuse, criminal behavior, mental health, and the effects of trauma in the community of Lompoc. We appreciate your ongoing support of Coast Valley Treatment Centers and our goal to better the Lompoc community.
Good evening, Council. Will Schuyler, Lompoc. Question is on consent item number one, the airport lease. In the staff report, in the first paragraph at the top, page two of two, kind of threw me there, that it says, upon completion of the lease term, the airport maintenance hangar will become the property of the airport. I seem to remember when the city took the airport from the county, the only property that was excluded was the soil conservation building there in the back. So I'd like maybe question, who owns the, the hangar right now?
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who has comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. All the items listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Does council wish to pull any item? Councilmember Starbuck.
I do not wish to pull item four, but I would like just a question answered on it.
And who is here representing item four with staff?
Maybe they want to hear the question first.
Gabe Garcia?
Okay, what, this is restating the master pay schedule is required by California Public Employees Retirement System. I read through it, I understand that we've done this numerous times. We come to discussion, and with the adoption of this resolution, it states that this was done primarily to reflect the current wages of the Lompoc Police Officers Association, amending the compensation plan, okay? So went through it because it does list all of our employees here. And when I got to the very last page on this, one of the things that struck me here was we knew that we were gonna adjust the assistant city managers' pay to be compensation for acting city management. Now, we have an acting fire chief, acting utility director listed here, but also at the same time as acting city manager, now that there's also a line item for economic development director acting with a, a pay. And when we voted on this, I don't think we included that in our vote, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, we agreed to compensate Ms. Gallivan for acting as a city manager, but we're bumping somebody here into another position. Was that voted on, or is this something that happens automatically? I'm just very curious, because it's quite a bit of money here.
Well, to, good evening, Madam Pro-Tim and members of the council. So normally, when we have someone in the acting, they do take over that acting position. In this case, it was written into the interim city manager's contract that she would be appointing an interim or an acting economic development director. So that's why that's there. We didn't have any other position besides an economic development director slash assistant city manager. But it, part of the, the contract or the agreement also states that Laura, Laura Doubles would be acting as the number two, which in essence is the deputy city manager. So that's why that position is in there, because it is in, it is in the agreement for the interim city.
But this is economic development acting. Now, I, call me silly on this, but wouldn't the simple chain of command on this be, Ms. McGinty would automatically go into economic development here?
Um, no.
Where she currently works?
No. So, so Ms. Gallivan was able to appoint another manager into that position. So, so that's, and that was written into her, into her agreement.
But wasn't voted on by council? That's, I guess, the yes or no answer here.
It was approved by council.
Her agreement?
Correct.
So this was some line item that some, how the five of us missed, then?
Uh, it's a line item that's in the, it's in the agreement.
Councilmember Mosby?
The other items on here, the, the fire chief acting and the utility directors acting, do we need to keep those on here, or should we remove those items?
We can remove them. Right now, there's not a need to have them in there. We've had them in there in case, in case there is a, an acting, if the chief were to leave. So, yes, we can, we can absolutely take them off, and then we'd have to just get approval to get them back on when we're going into.
But it'd probably be different numbers if we did down the road anyways, wouldn't they?
Absolutely.
Probably. And then, I guess you have number one sixty-four as well, as an acting, committee development director acting. We don't have that position filled, do we? Are we?
No, we don't.
Okay. So are those three are things that were in there that are not really positions we need currently?
We don't need those. So if the council wanted to take an action and delete those, we can certainly delete those off of that, off of that master pay schedule.
And I guess, you know, granted, I hear what you said on the other question, I didn't really have one on that, but I guess maybe if the discussion item just was a little more in-depth, I can kind of see where Councilmember Starbuck's question is, because it looks like we're doing this just for the P O A. But we have, and other alignments that we did as well in there, I guess, would maybe make it a little bit more of an understanding. So you're not looking at, is there something else that I've, I've got in here?
Understood.
That's all, I, I think would make it easier. Yeah, I think we can, we can go ahead and get along with, but I would make the motion to approve this one with removing those three items that we're no longer needing anymore.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Our, Phil, Mr. Wilkie's got an answer for them, sorry.
We actually had a discussion, Brad Wilkie, Management Services Director, we had a discussion about this. And with previous adoptions of the master pay schedule, we've usually done that with an explicit action, rather than just a minute action here. So I would like to suggest that we bring that back as another, as an item to eliminate those positions, so that there's a trail.
At another time, okay. All right, I'll go with you.
Councilmember Vega.
Gabe, one question here, maybe you could explain how, when everything, or if it does end up going back a step, okay, from acting? How exactly does that work, okay?
Yeah, so when a person is placed back into their position, they go into the position that they had once they fulfilled their acting commitment.
Okay, they don't make like the, the raise for six more months or anything like that? You guys didn't slip that one in there, did you?
There's no.
And I mean it in a nice way, you know what I mean?
There's no, there's no defined period of time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I move we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes for O with one in absentia. Seeing no staff presentations, announcements, or requests, we'll move on to oral communications. This is three minutes on any topic, not necessarily on the agenda, but any topic related to city business. If you have a comment on one of the actual agenda items, we request that you consider staying and speaking at that time.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I applaud those council members who ask hard questions, disagree, or change their mind on an issue. That's how we know you are doing the hard work on our behalf, gathering information, spending the hours necessary to fully grasp effects on citizens. Published attacks on city council members are straight out of Saul Alinsky's Thirteen Rules for Radicals. The effects of Alinsky's community organizing in Chicago helped destroy the city's livability. Perhaps our local affiliate, the Santa Barbara County Action Network, has a hand in attempts to silence opposing views. Zero-based budgeting recently adopted by the city can lead to substantial cost savings. I urge you to post online, by department, the savings realized as a consequence of zero-based budgeting. In support of full transparency, please include each line item affected. In support of zero-based budgeting, I urge you to create and implement a policy wherein most city workers validate the start and end to their workday by means of a time clock. Goals met and accountability could be more accurately measured. In support of improved city services, I urge you to create and implement city policy wherein all new hires must reside within, within the city limits of Lompoc. Thank you to those who stand up on our behalf.
How exciting. Hi, my name is Carmen Chavez, I'm principal of Hapgood Elementary, and I'm here just to talk about the intersection on Central, I mean Cypress and A Street. And I want to share with you that just during our start-of-school time and our dismissal times, it just is truly a dangerous intersection. So I'm gonna pass out our, our bell schedule, so you could see that. And just, just during those times, those crucial times, we have lots of people going to work or dropping off their kids and going to their work. And so it is just, some of the students who are walking or crossing guard, I just worry for them. So if ever you get a chance, I know many of you have, I've seen you out there on that, on that corner, but if there could be a traffic study or something done additionally, we got a great bump out a little bit further south on A Street, and that has helped. But we also need something else at that intersection, just because I think just people are, are just interested in getting to where they need to go, and they kind of might not, they might have that tunnel vision and may not see the little people that are, that are trying to get to school or trying to get home as well, too. So thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Ms. Chavez, real quick, just a question. I see Mr. Buck sitting in here, and I've talked with him quite a bit about what should happen in the city, we possibly should work on doing, but don't we currently have a crossing guard that we fund there?
There, there is a crossing guard right there, and even the crossing guard, I spoke with her today, she said that there may not be very many accidents that occur there, but there are like a thousand misses that are just a, a fraction of a feet or inches away from hurting someone. And so even, even with her using her cross, her stop sign, people do not see her.
She has actually come and spoke at public comment here about that intersection, and I drive it twice a day myself, so.
Yes. So just, thank you so much. And it's just during those crucial times. I think that the rest of the time, it's, it's like a very quiet little corner, but during the, the beginning of schools, and also at the dismissal time, there's just so much traffic. So if, if something else could be done, like a little flashing something, or a bump out, another bump, I don't know what, what could be done, but I'm just concerned for, for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. And by the way, almost all of the little bots, dots, reflectors on the bump out are no longer attached, so perhaps streets could go by there and glue down the ones that are still there and replace the ones that are missing. So I hope all of you have read the audited financial statement, which is now out, and have begun to compare it to the prior audited financial statement. It appears, looking at it, that you've suffered a multimillion-dollar decrease in the city's general fund reserves in the last, in the two-year budget. In fact, it looks like about two-thirds of your money's gone. And I've spoken to you about this many times, and now it would appear that I'm not the only one telling you that. So I would say that your fifteen-seventeen budget was not in fact a balanced budget, or your expenses exceeded your budget, and you were never asked to make a amendment to the budget, which we would typically do if we had overspent, or the income projections were not reasonable. And I didn't have enough time, I just came back from vacation, and I haven't gone through it yet, but by next meeting, I'll be prepared to talk about it in more depth, and I hope you will be, too. There also appears to be some budget items that are overspent by some very substantial amounts of money. And I recall, when I was mayor, at the end of a budget, we had true-ups, where the staff came in and said, we need to add this amount of money to this, we're gonna take some money out of here, at the end of the day, we're gonna be right. And I don't recall that, although I have missed a meeting or two with y'all. You councilmembers have the primary fiduciary responsibility for all of us residents of Lompoc. We rely on you to look after our money, but the results of the fifteen-seventeen budget don't seem to be too good. So I hope you will now take time with the audited financial statement from this budget and the prior budget, and if, you know, you're not quite as good with those numbers as some of us who've lived with numbers our whole lives, bring in some people you trust to look at them and help you understand them. Because now is the time to figure it out, because the problem is ongoing. Another six months has passed since that time period of the audited financial statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else step up for oral communications, I will close that now, and we will move on to the council appointments to the Economic Development Committee. We have five positions open. There's one at-large term ending December twenty twenty, associated with my appointee. There are two associate position terms ending February twenty twenty-two, one associate position term ending February twenty twenty, and one associate position term ending February twenty eighteen. There's one name at the top of the list that should be removed from consideration, as that individual was appointed to the Human Service Commission in the fall. So we're left with Tom Farrell, Brandon Bridge, Barbara Edwards, Joseph Doughty, and Lisa Andre. So given I have an at-large appointment, I will go ahead and nominate Lisa Andre to hold that position, and we'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, let's go with the two associate position terms ending February twenty twenty-two. So I will take two names nominated for this. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to nominate, since we're, there's two names, do we bring up both at the same time?
You're welcome to, yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and do Tom Farrell and Brandon Bridge for the two with a term ending twenty twenty-two.
And I'll take a second on that.
I'll second.
And let's vote. We have one associate position term ending February 2020, and I will take a motion on naming someone to that position. No motion being made. I will nominate Joseph Doughty.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Vote. Thank you. And finally, there's one associate position term ending 2018, and there is one name left of Barbara Edwards, so I will go ahead and nominate her. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And let's vote. All of those were accepted in a vote of 4-0 with one absentia. Thank you. Our first unfinished business item is number six, legal update options for local regulations of drones and directions deemed appropriate by city council. And we have our city attorney to make the presentation. Oh, our assistant city attorney is making the presentation. Welcome Jeff Malawi to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Osborne, member of the city council. I am Jeff Malavi, the Assistant City Attorney, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about drones and the city's ability to regulate drones in the current legal climate. I'm here because in August 2016, we had a previous meeting about drones. And at that time, the ordinance that the city attorney's office prepared and presented to the council, that ordinance contemplated the potential adoption of a state law, SB 868. But we learned at that meeting that that bill had been voted down in committee either that day or the day before. And so since it failed, and due to a number of other comments that were made at that August 2016 meeting by the public, the council directed us to reconsider the ordinance in light of the failure of the state law, and to also come back with a report addressing legal update. Since then, there have been new federal regulations adopted, there have been new, there's been new case law that has come down from the courts, and I'm going to update you on all of that tonight. But first, what I want to do is to give just a general summary of the entire staff report. And I have that there at the beginning of the written staff report. And before I get into the details, this is basically the summary. According to recent case law and our legal opinion, the federal regulations adopted by the FAA completely preempt any local regulation of drones, the operation of drones when in the air. The FAA says, or the critics of the FAA say, that the FAA's jurisdiction begins at the tip of the tallest blade of grass on the ground up. Anywhere above the tallest blade of grass, the federal law, in our legal opinion, pretty much preempts local regulation, and the courts, there have been courts that have held that. So we essentially cannot adopt any ordinances at the local level to regulate drone operation in the air directly, but that doesn't mean that existing state laws and existing local ordinances don't apply if they are not specifically directed at drone operation. So the example that I thought of to demonstrate this is someone has a drone, and they attach a claw to the bottom of their drone, and they fly it into your backyard, and they steal an apple off of your apple tree, and they take it away. The city can, not the, well, the police department can still prosecute that person in connection with the DA for stealing. Just because it was stealing done with a drone doesn't mean that it's not stealing. There's still background law that's not specifically applicable to drones that can be enforced. And I've gone over some of those in the written staff report. The other thing that cities can do with regard to drones is regulate drones when they are not in the air. And so this has used the city's land use authority. And that's the option number one that we've put in the staff report, which is essentially, the only thing that our office would be comfortable with at this time, given the state of the law, is an ordinance that regulates where in the city drones take off and land, and the times that drones can take off and land, because those fall under the city's land use powers and are not within the FAA jurisdiction. Now, all that being said, the law is still in flux, and there are federal bills pending right at this moment that have been introduced by Congress members to clarify the law, to say that local authorities have more jurisdiction than the courts have said they have. And so at any time, the state of the law could change. And obviously, if a new federal law were adopted that said local authorities have more authority to regulate drones, then we could bring back another ordinance to do just that. So going in a little bit more into the details, what are the federal laws and the FAA regulations that regulate drones in the air? So that's on page two of the staff report. And essentially, there is the FAA Modernization and Reform Act of 2012, and there are the Part 107 regulations that were promulgated by the FAA in August 2016. Those laws say that there are three different types of drones, and they're all regulated differently. One we're not going to talk about today are called public drones, and those are drones that are owned and operated by public agencies, police departments, the federal government. That is a completely separate ball of wax that has all different rules, and we're currently working with the Lompoc Police Department on complying with those rules and advising them on what the laws are with regard to them potentially operating a drone. The second type of drone is what is called model aircraft. And these are, you have to meet three criteria to be considered a model aircraft, less than 55 pounds, flown solely for hobby or recreational purposes, meaning not commercial drones, and flown within the visual line of sight of the operator. If you meet all three of those criteria, you are considered a model aircraft under the federal law. And there's very limited federal regulations on model aircraft. In my opinion, this is kind of an unintended consequence of the regulations that were adopted, because the feds were trying to protect what we think of as traditional model aircraft, the very, very light gliders, from any type of federal regulation. But when they defined model aircraft, they made it a very, very broad definition, and in fact, a lot of what we call drones fall under that definition. And essentially, any recreational drone that is flown within the sight of the operator is going to be a model aircraft. There are only three federal regulations on model aircraft. One is that they must give way to and not interfere with any manned aircraft. When they are flown within five miles of an airport, they have to provide notice to the airport operator and to the air traffic control, if there is an air traffic control. And the third is that they must be operated in accordance with a community-based set of safety guidelines, and within the programming of a nationwide, community-based organization. And that is a quote directly from the regulations, and what that means is difficult to determine, and no one really knows what a court would say that means. But in the congressional record, there were statements made by Congress that they intended this to mean the standards of an industry or group association that deals with drones. And they also mentioned the Academy of Model Aeronautics. So what Congress was probably trying to get at is that there are these industry groups, and people who operate recreational drones should be a member of one of those groups, or at least must comply with their operating standards or guidelines. But that is an extremely unclear area of law, and industry groups and drone clubs can change their guidelines and operating standards. And this is the area of law that the Congress is probably looking to clarify. Those are model aircraft, very limited laws under the federal regulations on model aircraft. And the third type of drones are what are called civil drones, but it's basically any other kind of drone that's not a model aircraft or not operated by a public agency. So these are essentially commercial drones, drones operated by businesses. There are a lot more regulations on drones operated by businesses. Those, some of them are listed on page three of the staff report. They're also listed in exhibit to the staff report. Those are the Part 107 regulations. I'm not going to go through all of them, but just a few of them. Commercial drones can only be operated during the daylight hours. They cannot operate over moving vehicles. Commercial drones cannot operate over any person unless that person is within a structure or a vehicle. They cannot operate higher than 400 feet above the ground. They cannot be operated in a reckless or careless manner. Operators of commercial drones need to have a remote pilot certificate. Those are just a few of the regulations that apply to commercial drones, but they're all in the exhibit to the staff report. Now, as I said before, because there is complete and exclusive federal preemption of drone law, these are the only regulations that apply to drones essentially in the entire country, and it is up to the FAA to enforce those regulations. And those are the only regulations that can be adopted on drones in the entire country, because there's complete federal regulation in 20, complete federal preemption, I meant to say. In 2017, there was a Massachusetts case that held just this, a city in Massachusetts had adopted an ordinance regulating drones, requiring all drone owners to register their drones with the city, prohibiting the operation of drones outside of the operator's line of sight, banning drones below 400 feet over private property without the permission of the private property owner, and banning the use of drones over city property without city permission. And the court in Massachusetts held that all of those city regulations are invalid, because the only regulations that can apply are the federal regulations. That was just a 2017 case. Now, as I said before at the beginning, that doesn't mean that there aren't laws that can be applied to prevent the negative impacts of drone use. There's lots of otherwise applicable state laws and local ordinances that don't specifically apply to drones. One is the state's Peeping Tom law, which is Penal Code 647 J1, which makes it a misdemeanor to view someone with a camera or video recorder in the interior of any area like a bedroom or a bathroom where they have a reasonable expectation of privacy. That is a crime under state law. It's a crime whether it's done with a drone or with a person who's standing at your window looking in your window. That can still be prosecuted. There are trespass laws. If someone's flying a drone over your property, say it doesn't have a camera, but it's interfering with your pet or something like that, the civil trespass laws can be used to enforce trespass against that person and to get an order to prevent them from entering your property with a drone. Potentially, there could also be criminal trespass laws that apply. Now, one of the things you might wonder is, if there's a drone flying in my backyard, how do I know whose drone that is if, and how are the police going to know whose drone that is? Well, that is a very big problem under the law right now, because there used to be a requirement that all drones be registered and have a number on them, and that number corresponds to the specific person who is the owner or the operator. But the federal courts have just held that that federal regulation was preempted, not preempted, but that would, it was invalid, because that rule that says only those three regulations can apply to model aircraft, that wasn't one of the regulations. So the federal courts have thrown out the registration requirements now, and that's another thing that Congress probably should get working on to clarify and fix in the law. And obviously, a city could not adopt a registration requirement. There are a few laws that the state of California has adopted that are on the verge of applying directly to drones. Civil Code 1708.8 makes it an invasion of privacy to enter the airspace of another person without their permission to capture any kind of visual image of the person engaging in a private, personal, or familial activity. When I read this, I think about paparazzi flying drones over celebrities' homes, or that may have been the reason that was adopted. It's essentially another invasion of privacy law like the Peeping Tom law. There is a law that was adopted in 2016, giving public entities and emergency responders immunity from liability for damages to drones that are interfering with their emergency response. So if a fire, one of those planes that drops water on the fire is being interfered with by a drone, the operators of that plane have the right and the ability to eliminate that drone in any way they can, and they're not liable for damage to the drone. Lastly, under California law that was adopted in, also in 2016, it's a misdemeanor for people to impede emergency or military personnel in the performance of their duties. And what the state did in 2016 is they added a drone operator to the definition of person in that law. So these are laws that can be enforced. They're adopted by the state of California. They have not been challenged under federal preemption grounds, so they are on the books. There are, there's a particular issue in Lompoc because we have an airport. We're also near Vandenberg Air Force Base. So there are some special rules about that. Like I mentioned, model aircraft, which are essentially recreational drones, have to give notice to the airport operator under the federal law before they fly anywhere within five miles of the airport. Well, that's the entire city of Lompoc. With the commercial drones, so not the model aircraft, but the commercial drones, the federal law actually says that you need not only to give notice, but you need authorization or permission from the air traffic control in order to operate your commercial drone within five miles of the airport. Well, that says air traffic control. And some airports don't have an air traffic control. I don't believe Lompoc has an air traffic control. So the federal law is unclear. If you're flying, if you're flying a commercial drone in Lompoc, do you need authorization? Because it says you need authorization from air traffic control. That hasn't really been sorted out. It could be argued either way. And also, I have attached a map to the back of the staff report that has the restricted airspace over Vandenberg. And obviously, no one is allowed to fly anything, much less a drone, in that restricted airspace without getting permission from Vandenberg itself. So the last topic is if the city wanted to adopt regulations on drones, what could they do? And that is to regulate drones when they're below the tip of the tallest blade of grass. And what we think that we'd be comfortable with is using your land use authority to regulate, if you so desired, where and when drones can take off and land. There are other California cities that have adopted drone ordinances that are much more ambitious and contain a lot more regulations of drones even when they're in the air. Nearly all of those were adopted prior to the court case that held in Massachusetts that all of those local regulations are preempted. So it remains to be seen what those cities are going to do with their ordinances. But we believe that they could be on thin legal lines. we believe that they could be on thin legal ice. So the conclusion and the recommendation of staff is just to consider this report, and if the council did desire to adopt some kind of ordinance, option one there is to direct us to bring back an ordinance limiting the times and locations within the city where drones can take off and land. Option two is to do not prepare any ordinance. And option number three is to provide other direction if you wish, and I am available for any questions.
So if somebody took their drone off in the back of a truck or out of their hand, is that above the tallest blade of grass?
I see what you're saying. I think if a drone is taking off from a truck that's sitting on the ground, that's the ground. That's, that's...
And if they're holding it in their hand, is that...
I think you're, you're on the ground when you're holding it in your hand. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, it sounds like we're in an impasse right here with trying to create a regulation that no one else agrees on yet or has at least stabilized in their minds on a federal and state level. So it almost looks like we're, we're pushing the envelope at this time just because of the impasse of the fact that the federal laws can't make a decision yet, even though there's already state laws. So just for clarification, it sounds like we haven't taken away any authority from the local law enforcement for people that are infringing on private property or peeping toms or theft or whatever. So it sounds like there is, there are still some laws in place that are already regulated. For people that are looking for that additional rule or law, it sounds like we, we don't have any case law to support it really, or any violations here of airspace or any near misses, or in the fact that we don't have a control tower here in Lompoc, I would say that there's not even a structure in place for permission if, if needed. Okay, so we're just trying to, we're kind of hitting a wall here. So far, just my comments sound like, I just don't see a reason to move forward with any option other than option two without regulating anything or at least to postpone it until something does happen on a federal level.
No, I, I think that you understand it quite well. I think we are operating in the Wild West. There are state laws that can be applied to address the negative impacts of drones that I went over. Enforcement could be a problem, but there's really nothing that we can do until the federal government kind of gets this sorted out and tells us what our authority is, except for this potential land use ordinance, taking off and landing, however effective that may be. It may not.
Thank you so much.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, that being said, I will open it up for public comment.
I'm Nicola Schmidt, Lompoc resident. I'd like to thank the city council and Lompoc residents for hearing for me tonight. I think the city attorneys pretty much nailed it. I'm not a lawyer, but that's pretty much been my understanding of flying model aircraft in the city as well. FAA and their, they're not wanting local and state restriction of national airspace and overflight. To remind everybody, this whole conversation got started because a concerned citizen thought that their privacy was being violated, and they thought the way to stop getting their privacy violated was to make model aircraft illegal. It's, that's been addressed. There's multiple state laws that protect you from peeping toms that don't wipe out the hobby. I'd like to thank the city council for doing their due diligence to look into this before moving forward because, like you said, there's a lot of other cities and places that are just going guns blazing trying to regulate something that the federal government says they can't. With the registration that was talked about, so Congress, big Congress in DC, set the rules for model aircraft. The FAA and the enforcement agency, they're the air cops. And then the FAA said, well, okay, so Congress said you can't make new rules for model aircraft, and the FAA said, nope, we can. We're going to do the registration. So a private citizen sued them to get the registration revoked. So that's why it went away. But then, when the National Defense Authorization Act got signed, in there was a little blurb that said, that appeals court ruling never happened. So now we're back in this area where Congress says you have to reg, you can't make a rule. FAA says we're making this rule, and so the registration's out there, but nobody knows if it's enforceable. And then for, if you do move in the option where you restrict takeoff and landing, would that mean that I could only take off and land from my house? And so I fly in public parks because I want to get away from people thinking I'm flying over their house and spying on them. So I fly in parks, but if you force me to take off and land from my house, now I'm flying over my neighbors. Are they going to think I'm spying on them? Are you making the problem worse if you do that? So my recommendation is you go with option two, and you don't do any city ordinances for now. It's the FAA's fight. You let them figure where the dust settles. If people are being bad and stealing with drones with hooks or invading people's privacy, we've got other laws we can go after them with. We don't have to wipe out the model aircraft hobby to do that. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'll return discussion to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
It seems, you know, I guess the question is, is there a problem with drones, or are we getting ready to create a problem based on drones? Currently, I'm going to pretty much agree with Mr. Schmidt there, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept staff recommendation number two to not prepare an ordinance at this time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. That is four in favor, zero against, and one in absentia. Our next item is seven, introduction of ordinance number 1644 parentheses 18, assigning the city council the mobile home rent stabilization board's responsibilities as established by chapter 5.60, and our city attorney will be presenting this one.
Thank you. So we're here tonight because on December 19th, we brought an ordinance to you that the former city manager had suggested for two reasons. One, because it was difficult to find people to take the position of the mobile home rent stabilization board, as well as trying to reduce some administrative costs. And the city manager had recommended that the planning commission be appointed as the substitute body. At that meeting, you decided not to have the planning commission be appointed such, and you said that you would take it on yourself. And in addition to that, you asked for information on how other communities handle mobile home park rent stabilization. So chapter 560 of the Lompoc municipal code prohibits or allows an annual rent increase at mobile home parks of, by 75% of the then CPI. That chapter also allows park owners to request greater increases in rent if certain criteria are met. And that constitutionally, they have a right, a property owner has a right to ask for more rent if they're losing money on the fact that they've made improvements or whatever. So there's constitutional issues to why that loophole or not loophole, why that opportunity is there. In addition, that chapter creates the mobile home rent stabilization board, which in essence reviews those requests when they come in. The ordinance on your agenda tonight, number 1644 parentheses 18, amends the section that deals with that board and has you appointing yourself as operating the, as the board would. Other communities, about 100 or so, or over 100, have rent control regulations for mobile home parks. A majority of the Santa Barbara cities have those regulations. Eight of those use 75% of CPI rule. One uses, and I think it's Santa Barbara, uses the lesser of 75% of the CPI or 3% of the current rent. And a few states, rather than relying on a board or the council, they rely on the state office of administrative hearings to hold that review and decide whether or not the property owner, the mobile home park owner justified their increases, and then that decision can be validated or challenged by a renter if they think that the hearing officer was an error. So based on that, I am recommending tonight, or based on your direction, asking you to introduce ordinance 164418 to establish yourselves as the rent medi, rent stabilization board. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Pranani? Any discussion? I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 4-0 with one in absentia. We have one new item of business, hangar and tie-down rental rate adjustments at Lompoc Airport, adoption of resolution number 6151 parentheses 18, and our aviation transportation administrator, Richard Fernbach, will present.
Good evening, council. You have before you a recommendation to receive staff input, take public testimony, and adopt resolution 615118, which sets fees for hangar and tie-down rentals at Lompoc Airport effective July 1, 2018. We bring this to you every two years to increase or address the fees for hangers and tie-downs at the airport that are not covered by lease agreements, and we compare airports in and around Santa Barbara County to make sure that our fees and charges aren't any higher than anybody else, and are fair and just in comparison. The resolution would be effective July 1, and increases would be approximately 10% this July 1 and 10% July 1, 2019. The physical impact of these is that this is one of our major fees at the airport, our major revenue generators for the airport, and we try and adjust it so that it's not out of line with other airports, as I said. And we try and make sure that we provide a good facility for all these people utilizing the airport and for people coming in and utilizing the airport from out of the area. With that, the action will maintain our cash flow at the airport, which is a enterprise account. We take no city general revenues or any other tax revenues for the operation of the airport. I'm here for your questions.
Councilmember Vega.
Mr. Fernbach, are these 10% actually typical for increases? And it looks in the staff report that we're comparable to what Santa Maria, is that where we're comparing ourselves to, kind of, sort of?
Actually, we compared Camarillo, Santa Barbara, San Andres, Santa Maria, all the surrounding airport areas. Some are higher than us. Santa Maria is somewhat lower because they are a tax-supported organization. We do not get any tax dollars, so I kind of discount that a little bit.
The reason I ask is because I think 10% seems to be an amount that's probably expected in most cases, you know, as the economy grows, but I think Santa Barbara's probably not an unfair, is an unfair comparison probably in anybody else that's not, that's publicly funded. You guys are your own entity, from what I understand. So, thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
Santa Maria is significantly different airport than Lompoc, though, right? There's, there's other...
You have a lot of other revenue generations.
But there's also other issues with people with hangers, right? There's other, it's not as favorable for people to store a plane there as is Lompoc, right?
True.
You have 10 people on a waiting list trying to get into Lompoc right now, right? And how much more revenue would we have coming in? I know in the budget, you're operating at a deficit. You're the only enterprise that has a little bit of a deficit, and it's primarily because of the funding, the matching that you had to do to get grant funds. Correct?
Yes, well, we did operate a little bit under, but, and this is one of the reasons we're kind of catching up over the years. During the downturn in the economy, we did not have any increases for, I believe, a three-year period. So we're kind of backtracking a little. We also have a large project coming up. Next year, we're going to be getting FAA money to do planning and construction documents for all of our runway and taxiway lighting and a runway overlay. And then two years after that, we get about a $1.3 million grant from the FAA that we have to match.
You need that 2.5%?
5% of that.
Right, so that's, this money that you're generating primarily all goes back into the, the airport, correct?
Yeah, everything stays with the airport. Airport funds are not allowed to be used by other city entities or for any other use except the airport by federal law.
Right, so this, how much new revenue would this 10% bring in annually?
I don't have that generated right now, but it'll probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $10,000.
It'll help offset your, well, like I said, in the budget book, you're running a little bit of deficit. So this seems to me like it's something that you're definitely needing to do, and you suspended for three years, and it looks like we're in the ballpark, and Santa Maria is, is different. It's not completely an apple-to-apple comparison.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Then I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion from council. Councilmember Vega.
I recommend we adopt resolution number 6151, parentheses number 18.
Councilmember Mosby?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Then we'll vote. And that passes 4-0 with one in absentia. Item number nine was pulled due to the failure of the referendum, and so we will not be discussing that. Madam clerk, do we have any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. Finally, we have oral communications. This is a two-minute maximum on any city issue or concern that you would like to address the council with.
Good evening, council members, members of the city of Lompoc. I just wanted to say regarding the referendum and pulling of item number nine, I wanted to say thank you to the council members, all of you who voted for the ordinance number 164017, which will now go into effect. I thank you for your leadership, for you taking the time to educate yourselves, to listen to the public comments, and to allow for safe access and legal access to the people of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and start council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
I do have a council request. Before, it was a recommendation, and I hope that, hopefully, we can get some support on this. Again, with Ms. Gallivan, Mrs. Gallivan, I would like economic development for us to move forward with a restructure and come back with some ideas to see how we can reinforce what, the time spent on economic development. And again, with, with a couple of ideas on how transparency can be attained in a more e-commerce manner so that we can spread information and share information so that we can all take part in, in the moving forward and the success of Lompoc. I think without us all being involved with selling Lompoc, I think it would be, it's I think without us all being involved with selling Lompoc, I think it would be, it's kind of futile. I can see from economic development standpoint, they're, they're doing everything they can within their resources and their time, and now they would like to help, get some help implementing and maybe some new ideas and new goals. And I think council should be heavily a part of that also, to assist them so that they can attain their goals. Right now, I think that they're probably handicapped to a point. And, you know, with, with some of the priorities that we have in Lompoc, there are many people that refuse or don't want to look at the problem that we have at the riverbed, things that would keep people from coming to Lompoc. You know, it's not about being heartless. It's about movement toward helping people get the help that they need, plus, you know, the housing aspect of it in the business community. So that would be a council request on that point.
Ms. Gallivan, is this the year that they do a strategic plan update? And might that be a joint meeting where council was involved as a way to assist with that? I don't know when that timeframe is. I don't know--
The strategic planning meeting for the Economic Development Committee is going to be in 2018. So we have, it takes some time to start the planning process, which we haven't started, but we've discussed that it needs to be happening this calendar year. So that is a good opportunity to give input, for the council to give input on how it might look at restructuring, what new ideas, how, what new priorities might be. So that, that may be a very good opportunity.
It's an opportunity, but I think timeframe-wise, you know, sometimes in 2018, it doesn't help facilitate their time for now, okay? That's pretty much an open window.
Let me, I'm sorry, let me be a little more clear. We have new members that have just come on, and we do want to get them going on the strategic planning while it's still new and fresh. So I didn't mean in the last part of 2018. Good point, Councilmember Vega. It would be sooner than later.
No, I appreciate it. And I'd like to also thank staff for this last year. This is a happy new year to everyone. I'm planning on moving forward in a different fashion here. We're planning on making more items than not, and I would implore for all our council members to make more of them into action, action items instead of just conversations sometimes when we have the opportunity to move Lompoc forward. I think what we did was we, we, there are many things that we've done that were positive, but there were things that were, you know, there was a learning curve, okay? I think we can do a lot better, and I, and that's what I'm striving to do. So thank you.
So I'd be happy to support a motion for the council participating in the strategic planning. That is a vital meeting that I think has been very successful, and having councils attended and participate in it would actually broaden the discussion and help the group focus. And the sooner the better. So I realize there are time constraints, but if we could entertain it being early in the year, that would be great. Do we have a third?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll give you a third on it. It would be our sixth top priority in the strategic plan.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it, yes.
Okay. So there are three. Anything else to report or request?
I don't think so. I think I'd like to say hello to some of our friends over there, all the veterans groups. I think that along with this public, public format that we have here, sometimes I don't, you forget out there that the public's watching, and I want you guys to know that, hey, we're actually in support of the city hall being successful and the city moving forward. And I think we need to do it in a manner which we take part in. I think the people come in here, they make rules, and they have negative feelings. But I would like to say, hey, one of the economic development people, Mr. Trailer, said, hey, we should practice on trying to say yes more than we say no. And I think that, I'd like to say hello to my friends at Post 1717, the Veterans Memorial Building. They watch this, this program all the time, and they're actually, they're actually interested in the growth of Lompoc. So thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
Just a couple of quick items. One, again, the audit report is out there. There's been some questions and comments from people about the city's financials being audited, and it is out there. It is available. It is online. I believe, Mr. Wilkie, right? It's available online. I think we just got it in our mailboxes. I had an opportunity to go through and read it only once so far. And I'd like, happy to say on page 130, if you go through there, of the expenditures items and some of the good news, because we hear a lot of bad news on it, but of the 17 items that came through, 14 of them came under budget and only three were over budget. So check out page 130 if you don't want to spend a lot of time reading this audit report. It's, it's a little dry, but in the back, there's a lot of good data and information, a lot of data I think Economic Development Department can look at about employment numbers and trends. Another thing that's been brought up a lot about what is happening in the riverbed, and just to let you know, I've, I've been in communication with this, the county supervisor, and I know that they've been working, the county has with the sheriff, and the sheriff with our PD, and with a lot of other partners in the community, Good Sam. And they're moving forward as a group in a grant application. This was just announced that they're moving forward January 9th at the county supervisor meeting. So this grant would allow for policing, mental health's involved. So there'd be a lot of movement going out there to work on, on the riverbed. So there, there aren't, people aren't being silent. They're moving forward. This would allow upwards of $2 million grant over the next two years to work on that. So something is happening on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
That's me. A couple of questions at staff. I noticed in this agenda, we didn't get a list of expenditures. We've always--
Treasury's report?
Well, not the Treasury's report. I was going to ask about that. We haven't received a Treasury's report for several months, but there was no expenditures in this, which is normally item two.
I'll have to take a look and see if the report was sent to the city clerk, but typically that's on an ongoing basis, so it must be something that our department just didn't get over, the clerk's department, timely for this meeting.
I can tell you, I can tell you that both the city clerk's office and the finance division were laid out with the flu.
Laid out? Okay. I just, I wondered if we were doing something that I wasn't aware of with, with this.
So to answer your question about the Treasury's report, the Treasury's report is held up by the audit. So for us to be able to do the ongoing, within our antiquated finance system, it, we don't have the good beginning numbers until the finance, the audit is completed, then we can load up those beginning numbers for July that are based on the audit. So we have those reports, they should be going out this week for July, and then August and September should be coming out within, probably within a month or a month and a half. Typically, the turnaround time, except for the fact that we have a six-month lag on the audit, the typical turnaround time is about 45 days from the date that a month ends to the date that the report is completed and can be distributed to the parties that are getting it. It's just, we don't have the beginning numbers for July until audits virtually complete. So, yeah, so that should be catching up. The, the one caveat I have with that is, on October 1st, the new finance system, a portion of the new finance system was brought online. So that will create a couple more challenges as we convert July, August, and September. And not only do we have to balance those in the old system, but we have then have to bring those balances and those detailed items into the new system so that by the time we get to end of June, we'll have 12 months of detailed information that's in there so we can do the next budget cycle, next audit cycle with one, one accounting system, rather than having to go back and forth between one quarter in one system and three quarters in the other system. So that, once that transition occurs, I think we'll be much more nimble in being able to not only deliver the reports for January, February, March, April, May, and June on a 45-day cycle, but also the ones that are based on the audit. The current system, the old system, is really very much integrated into the ending balances. And because it's so manual, we have to wait to those ending balances, and we shouldn't have to do that with the new system.
I guess the reason, one of the reasons I'm asking this is because I'd like to have the most current information that you could provide for our budget review in March, and all of a sudden, we get the whole CAFR and, without the supporting documents. And that's why I was questioning it. So, I mean, that's the path I was looking at.
Well, all the reports for last year should be available. It's just that, since the publication, since the effective date of the publication is when we're catching up.
Right. No, thank you. The last thing I have is I'd like to remind all the public that the Beautification and Appearance Commission is holding a public workshop in council chambers here on the 25th of January at 6:30. And it's a citywide enhancement beautification workshop. So they're looking for groups, individuals, people that want to volunteer, take on projects, et cetera, et cetera. And there's flyers all over town, and it's posted here at the city. But make it a point, come down, get involved.
Thank you. I'd like to make a request that staff report back on the council request for an intermediary food permit solution that we discussed last spring. And the request was for an intermediary process to be created while we were waiting for the zoning update, and we have not had an update on that. And I know there was lots of transition going on in the planning department, but if we could get an update on that.
Was this food trucks?
And then I'd like to report on the attendance at the Human Services Committee meeting, Parks and Recs Committee meeting. I attended the badge ceremony for the promotion of Battalion Chief Ruda, and then also attended the Economic Development Committee's Economic Vitality Forum last week. There is an agricultural forum on February 2nd, the 12:30 to 4:30 in Santa Maria Fair Park, and it is hosted by Econ Alliance, and it's $65 per person. This is the third year. The first year was actually held and started in Lompoc. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure we had three in support of your council request.
Oh.
I'll give you a second on that.
Thank you.
Give you a third.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, last but not least, I have begun holding office hours at city hall on Mondays from 1:00 to 5:00, and Thursdays from 9:00 to 1:00. And you're more than welcome to drop in or call for an appointment, and you can find my city email address and phone number on the website. And that has been utilized. I've had several drop-in and some interesting conversations, so please take advantage of that way to find me. Any more?
I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank you for running a real one and well-run meeting, and you facilitated greatly, so I wanted to give you a compliment on that.
Oh, thank you. With that note, I'll adjourn the Lompoc City Council to regular meeting at 6:30 PM on February 6, 2018.